Is Alicia joining us? There she is. Hello.
Hello.
All right. It's five o'clock, so I'm gonna get going.
Recording in progress.
Welcome everyone to the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three School Committee Meeting in keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and attendance shall count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on E-Cab. This meeting is open to the public and we'll take questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address. We'll do our best to answer all your questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. Alrighty. So first up. Some minutes. We have a few regular school committee meeting minutes from Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions, comments, or edits? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the regular school committee meeting minutes from Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
Star so moved.
DeLuca second.
I can't hear you guys.
All right. DeLuca second? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me because I actually? Okay, made the motion for it first, okay.
Yeah, all good to go. All right, roll call vote.
Yes.
Durant's yes?
DeLuca yes.
Star yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the executive session minutes from Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Does anyone want me to hold them for edits? Okay. Can, um, I'm looking then for a motion to either approve and release or approve and not release at this time, the school committee executive session minutes from Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve but not release at this time due to ongoing negotiations.
Can I get a second?
Neil second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant's yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, excellent. All right. Next, vote to approve an out-of-state trip, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So this is not an overnight trip because Providence is out of state. We, by policy, have to approve all, or you are asked to approve out-of-state field trips and that is included. So the OA Drama Club, Drama Club, and you see Mr. Huberman is here to answer any questions you might have, is taking students in grades nine through twelve to Providence Performing Arts Center in Rhode Island on March twenty-fourth. Approximately fifteen to seventeen students are anticipated to attend and the cost to students is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I will let him fill in the other details, but, uh, and of course you can ask him any questions if you have them at that time. Mr. Huberman?
Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Hello, welcome.
Uh, I'm looking to get a trip approved to Rhode Island. Um, normally I go to Boston for this sort of thing, but Hades Town was not playing in Boston this year. Um, it's a, uh, best, best, uh, best musical Tony Award-winning, um, and it's just a nice opportunity for our students to see uh, professionals in the field. Um, it's good discussion. Um, let me just have a good time.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any specifics, yes.
Hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. I, I'm assuming that they're bearing the cost of that themselves. Is there any option for, say, a scholarship or something for a student that may not be able to afford that?
So I, I set up, basically when I budgeted out the trip, I set up dues for students and the, so the dues for this trip are approximately a hundred and twenty dollars apiece. Um, but throughout the course of the year, they had opportunity for fundraising. Um, so students can kind of meet that spot and at no cost to them. So every student kind of has that ability. Um, and it's usually over the full amount. I had some students raise a hundred and fifty bucks, two hundred bucks with ads, with, um, car wash ticket sales, with chocolate sales from Hilliard. So all of the fundraising students have had sort of an upfront opportunity to raise those funds themselves up to this point.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, wish I was going. Looks like a good night out, so.
It's, it's good to listen to. It's a nice, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's the Greek tragedy of Orpheus and, uh, Eridis kind of modernized and there's like cool jazz music and it's a really, if you've never seen it before, Hades Town, it's a really great show.
And King Hades and Persephone, don't forget them.
They're in there too, and the fates, yes, they're all in there. It's, it's, it's just a cool spin on it, really fun.
Great opportunity.
Awesome, all right. Um, if there's no other questions, can I get a motion to approve the out-of-state trip? Um, for students to go see, I'm gonna say it wrong, Hades Man?
Hades Town.
Town.
Um, thank you. Um, on March twenty-fourth in Providence, Rhode Island.
So move, DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
Star second.
Roll call vote.
Neil, yes.
Durant's yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, have a great time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey, next stop, personnel change retirement, special education teacher at ARO, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Uh, we have retirement this evening and the employee wasn't sure if they could make it. Unfortunately, I don't see that she's here, but um, I will sadly announce that, uh, special education teacher at Richardson Olmstead, Rose Marie or Rose Valente, uh, began her career in the Eastern Public Schools in two thousand five as a part-time teacher and quickly in two thousand six moved to full-time. She's been at Richardson Olmstead, um, bef- HHR and then Richardson Olmstead, so she's been in the building, um, for the past eighteen years and she plans to retire June thirtieth. Uh, again, another, another tremendous loss for the district. If any of you know Rose, you know that she has a beautiful temperament, lovely person, wonderful teacher, um, great for her role and we are very sad to see her go, but certainly wish her well in her endeavors and, um, are very happy for her that she will be able to explore her retirement.
Okay. Dear Mr. Gretschel, please accept this letter as notification of my retirement at the end of the school year. My final day of employment will be June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. This decision comes with mixed emotions, but I'm excited to move on to the next chapter of my life and spend more time with my family. It has been a privilege to teach at Richardson Olmstead School for the past eighteen years. I've made wonderful memories working with students and watching them grow. I also have made, um, a few very special friendships that will last a lifetime. I wish you and the students at Richardson Olmstead all the best. I'm happy to assist in making the transition as seamless as possible. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me with any questions. With thanks and appreciation, Rose Marie Valente, Special Ed Teacher. Nancy?
Yes, um, I did have the privilege to, um, work with Rose, um, in my role, um, as a teacher uh, way back and, um, again, as Dr. Cabral said, she just has that perfect temperament to work with her, her special ed student. She's even keel, just so kind and, and just a wonderful, wonderful woman. And I really, um, wish her the best in her retirement and she will be missed.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Rose Marie Valente with regrets?
So move, DeLuca.
Second?
Star second? Sorry. I saw you come off mute just after I did.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant's yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. We wish her well. All right, next up, the annual Honeydew Donuts Do Gooder Award, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so, uh, I was hoping that this staff member could join us too, but she's tremendously, um, humble, of course. But, uh, I did let her know that I thought it was very important that, that she was recognized, even though there was, um, a release from the company. I wanted to make sure that she was recognized by the school committee. Uh, Marilyn or Mal Cunha was the recipient of the Honeydew Donuts Do, D-E-W, Gooder Award. Uh, according to Honeydew Donuts, this award is for the unsung heroes who inspire us to work harder and make life better for others. Um, there's a very nice quote in your packet from the nominating parent and, uh, I don't know if you'd like me to read that. I, I'm trying hard not to, uh, embarrass the employee. She, like I said, she's extremely humble, um, but I wanted to make sure that I shared that. It's a significant award, uh, in the sense that there are, um, certainly being recognized as always very appreciated and not very often for people in education and, um, this was awarded to five people. The, uh, awardee was given, uh, a reward of two thousand five hundred dollars, but also to another two thousand five hundred dollars for their charity of choice, uh, qualified five oh one, um, charity of their choice. And so of course Mal has been very involved in working with, um, Lindley Menard's family and our, our um, kindness initiative at ARO and of course many other things that I will forget. Um, items, I'm sure if I start listing, so I thought it was very important that you were aware of this, uh, we did forward information previously, but I thought it would be really important to share with the public and hopefully I'm not in too much trouble with Mal because I like her. So this is, um, this is to let you know, um, how much we appreciate Mal and all of our amazing employees just like her who go above and beyond every day to, uh, do good in the world. And I wanted to make sure that, um, she was acknowledged in some way.
Thank you. And I know many of us had the opportunity to vote for her every day. I was rooting her on, so that was great that she got it. Nancy?
And that's, I was just gonna say that when it's, it was a, a week of voting and, um, you know, the whole family got the word out and, you know, tell two people, tell to be, you know, immediately, and I was getting texts and emails from family, relatives, friends. When can I vote? How, you know, asking me the rules and everything. And she is, she, she definitely deserves this and we are all so very proud of her. Um. The, um, sorry. The love for Lindley is awesome. She, the family is amazing. And, um, if you knew Lindley, you liked her the minute you met her. And, um, Mel's kind of the same way, although it takes a little longer to get to know her. She's a little feisty. But, uh, she's always been like this and.
Says the big sister, you're entitled.
Yeah, she's an amazing sister, an amazing person, and, um, this is so great that, um, she was one of the winners towards the end when it was getting kind of close, you know, it was like they were percent, you know, one percent apart. Because there were only, I think there were ten people in the finalists, but they had picked from, those ten were chosen from like a hundred or so people. It was amazing. And if you read the other biographies or the other letters that were sent in, everybody was deserving. I mean, really, it was, it's, it's amazing to see what goes out beyond our little world, so. Congratulations to Marilyn and, um, I think that it's good for Eastern Public Schools because she's working with all our kids every day, so. Thank you very much for, for letting everybody know. Thank you.
Maybe you can get me out of trouble.
You won't be in trouble, I promise.
Chrissy or Lynn, can you, there she is, thank you. Awesome. Anyone else want to say anything?
Well, Michelle?
Yes.
I would just say that, uh, I have known Marilyn Cunha for many, many years. You know, just from a distance, I've been able to observe her and I always thought she was one of our warmest, most thoughtful teachers and I was really delighted to be able to vote for her. It was very exciting. And of course she got tons and tons of votes as was well deserved and I would like to congratulate her personally myself as well.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Um, move to Blanche Ames update, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks. So the move is ongoing. Uh, we're certainly moved in, but, uh, we, you may, honestly, you may see the lights go out on Chrissy and myself because that happened right before our meeting. Um, with, I keep telling people with state-of-the-art facilities, uh, comes unusual state-of-the-art issues that you didn't realize. I cannot turn my lights on or off with my hand. Uh, they are programmed by computers intentionally to save energy, which is obviously, um, very good and we hope to do that and save the taxpayers money. Um, but it is on a timer that in the evening shuts off every fifteen minutes and we have to manually get up and put it back on. Can't do the flailing thing. So, uh, so don't be alarmed if it goes off, uh, but it's a small price to pay and it will go away soon. We are exceedingly grateful, thrilled, excited, sort of finding things every day. I can't even name the things that I'm like, oh my gosh, I didn't know that worked like that. It's fantastic. Um, we're putting, we're getting finishing, finishing touches put on a lot of things that people can see. Um, they don't know about, you know, the behind-the-scenes things like that or, um, or our technology and different things that we're just tweaking, which we completely anticipated in a building of this size, all going online at the same time. Um, we're, we're ticking away at things, you know, even in your own home, something happens, you find um, with thousands of chairs and desks, you know, you might have a couple that are wobbly or don't work right or what have you. So we have these little things going on and it's perfectly fine. Uh, the staff has been tremendous. They're still putting in all kinds of time on their own to make sure they're settled. I don't, I think you can kind of see in my screen, I've got some boxes still going and I have, uh, at least ten in front of me. So we're slowly ticking away at it. Lynn has been helpful to me beyond belief. Um, but we will get there. The reason I bring up the boxes is because, um, I explained to the school planning committee last night. I think they could see as soon as they walked in the library, which we had for our first meeting in there, which was incredibly exciting to have them meet there. Uh, they could see that it still was so filled with boxes, the cases don't have books in them all yet and it's just, uh, it's something we want to be done to welcome the public in. And so we are still planning on, um, in April, May completion of the fields and that includes the traffic loop and getting a parking lot back. And so those are really important if you're gonna have a large amount of people coming to a facility and walking around and seeing things, so. Um, so it'll be, uh, a lot safer, a lot more accessible, a lot more parking and certainly much more to look at. And so we look forward to having that hopefully this summer. That's what we are planning on right now. Certainly, we, we finished this project on time and under budget, but this is just a phase of that. Uh, the next phase, of course, is the demolition of Parkview and then the, the construction of the fields, which is very extensive. Uh, one thing that I think is very important for the public to know that I did not realize until last night is that, uh, the fields need to have two complete growing seasons before they can be used. Uh, which makes complete sense to me, just was not in my wheelhouse at that time. Uh, so they will not be available for the fall regardless. And then, uh, we have to see, uh, if they're, if they're done in time for this fall and then, uh, uh, excuse me, if they're done in time for this spring and then they have next fall, the following spring or this time next year, we can use those fields. Of course, if it's delayed and it doesn't have a full growing season this spring, that means that we have to go through the fall and the spring and so they wouldn't be able to be used until not next school year, the following school year. So we have a little bit longer to go than I anticipated, but, uh, hopefully things go smoothly and we can use it for the second half of the next school year. I think that's important that people have that expectation going forward. It certainly hadn't been mine, but now we know and so, um, the earlier we can plan for alternatives, the better. However, the, the parking lot will be done, the bus loop will be done, traffic should be better and the playground will be done. So those can all be utilized, two more playgrounds actually can be utilized uh, as soon as that project is finished. So we're excited to welcome people to see all of that probably this summer. In terms of the students, not a negative thing to say. Uh, the beginning of the school year, I, I mentioned at our last meeting, they were just smiles and high-fives coming in, super excited and that has only heightened. If you think I'm finding things every day, they're finding things and wonder in everything continuously and it's just fantastic. So we're very happy to see. Uh, the design, the principal architect of the building was here yesterday for the first time with children in the building and honestly, she made me teary because you know, she, she really explained that, uh, you know, like all of us, this is why she does what she does. And to see children in the spaces that she really helped us make from nothing was just so powerful. So she was thrilled about that. Uh, our lingering issue right now is traffic and so I'll spend a minute talking about that. Um, we have, um, parents who are reporting over an hour wait to pick up children. However, that shouldn't be. Uh, we are continually tweaking what we're doing. I did have a traffic engineer, the one who actually created our plan come in last week. I'm expecting his, uh, report and suggestions anytime if there are any because we have to remember while he gave us a plan that we anticipate will work, it's not the plan we're using right now because we don't have all of our parking lots and we don't have our bus loop, which makes a huge difference. And it even affects the middle school because now Spooner Street is blocked off and that was a major entry and exit point. So we've got this, uh, temporary, um, solution going on and I'm hopeful he can give us input, but perhaps not. But the idea is, um, you know, we've been, uh, Chrissy's been, I've been, we're at dismissal, which is primarily the issue. The middle school dismissal from the first student walking out the door. Now the middle school gets out at two thirty. They will never get out before, they will never get out at two twenty-nine. They will always get out at two thirty. From the first student walking outdoor, the door to the last car leaving the circle, no more cars in the loop. It's thirteen minutes. That means no parent should ever be waiting longer than thirteen minutes. And if they choose to wait less, they can come six minutes late and wait seven minutes or come ten minutes late and wait three minutes. Uh, but the, the issue is, and I can see why this would be the perception, but the issue is that parents are lining up up to an hour before dismissal. Uh, and so in many, a half hour, a half hour before dismissal, the queue is outside of the middle school and down to Columbus. Um, certainly for anybody pulling up at three twenty or three twenty-five, it gives the impression, unfortunately, a false impression that they need to get there earlier next time. And so people are queuing earlier and earlier and earlier. Um, we may need to block that off so they don't come in. We're not sure yet, but what's happening is people are even queuing on Columbus and on both sides of Columbus, which is an issue for our neighbors, for our residents. And, uh, it's not very safe because we do have walkers. Those walkers are crossed by a crossing guard from, uh, over Columbus, but then the kids are on their own after that. They're off school property. And so we have kids that are crossing the street, maybe even inappropriately, but the fact of the matter is there are too many cars there than there should be right now. So we're, uh, really asking, I, I mean, I knocked on windows of cars all the way up uh, just to get a better sense of why people were there to kind of help us in our decision-making and, uh, to the person, they all said that they, um, if they don't get there on time, they never get out of there and they're already waiting forty-five minutes and but the fact is if they show up at two thirty, they can be out in thirteen minutes. They will be out in thirteen minutes. Um, for Blanche Ames, that's seventeen minutes. I have to give them, I, I give both staffs a tremendous amount of credit, but Blanche Ames was really starting from, uh, a complete unknown. They've created quite a system in two short weeks. They have created an incredible system, uh, think Disney World, where you're lining up for a ride behind cone one, cone two, cone three, depending on when your parent comes in. And, uh, again, it's seventeen minutes total. So if someone's waiting eighteen minutes or longer, that is the result of either their own queuing or people queuing in front of them. So we're really pleading with people not to do that. The problem is if we plead with people and ten percent of the parents don't do it, they come the next day and it looks like they've been duped. We really need everyone to do it and we need everyone to cooperate and we just haven't gotten to the point where we're able to do that yet. So we're really asking for parents' cooperation. Um, otherwise it's, it is going to remain the way it is. Um, and unfortunately, the system that the traffic engineer developed for, to be our permanent solution is also predicated on the notion that people are coming when we have pickup. Um, certainly five minutes, maybe even ten minutes before is okay. But queuing at three for a three thirty dismissal or two for a two thirty dismissal and certainly any be, anything before that is very, very problematic for, for us in making sure we keep all kiddos safe. The other area, which was not part of the construction project, but I want to mention because it has the same problem, is Richardson Olmstead. The Richardson Olmstead issue is compounded by the fact that we only have one entry and exit, so we can't really change up the traffic flow much. But it also weaves through an active parking lot. I know people think that, you know, teachers and children, they only come in and in the morning and they are leaving at dismissal, but it's a place of business. We have people coming to get their children out for appointments or, uh, from the nurse's office. We have vendors coming in, we have deliveries, we have staff. Uh, Chrissy and I, for example, are in and out of buildings all day long. And if I am at Richardson Olmstead, I I have to wait for up to half an hour because I can't get out. That's super dangerous if we ever needed to get, uh, emergency vehicles in there. Delays of even ten seconds, we know, can have very dire consequences. So that we're gonna be taking on soon. Um, what we're asking is, again, please queue no more, no more than ten minutes before dismissal. Five is plenty. Kids will never come out earlier, I assure you. But also, we're really asking people not to park in the wrong parking lot. When they park at Richardson Olmstead and they walk over to get kids from Blanche Ames, or they park at the middle school and tell their kids to walk from Richardson Olmstead, it makes it so exceedingly difficult for our staff to has, have eyes on every child. And so we're really, um, at the mercy of the cooperation of the public and again, doing my plea to everyone to please help us out with this. Um, as much as, uh, you know, as much as you help us, we can make the process a lot faster and easier for everyone. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll add one item. We have walkers at Blanche Ames. That's any student that walks home. We are finding that parents are parking at a neighboring school and walking over to pick up their child. That's not the intention of walkers. Um, we're asking parents not to do that, but also we moved them over to our courtyard. Uh, it's a much better place, first of all, for them to wait. It's beautiful and it has seating. But also we have staging areas within the school, primarily the cafeteria, which goes out the front door and the gymnasium, which has gymnasium doors in the back. We have hundreds of students in each space and, um, not, a very small amount of staff, a safe amount, as long as they're not going out multiple doors, but a small amount of staff to supervise them. Uh, we need to have the walkers in a separate area and so we're bringing them to the courtyard. There were concerns because we don't have sidewalks, uh, yet from the courtyard to Lothrup Street. However, we did rectify that week. We have a crossing guard, literally, crossing guard literally walks with them. He literally picks up the walkers, including any parents, at the courtyard, walks them down to Lothrup Street. At the courtyard, walks them down to Lothrup Street, they go up Lothrup and then they cross Sheridan. Um so he is there for the entirety of their traversing. That um that route, he stops traffic for them and makes it safe. So. Uh again, that's a temporary fix because we don't have any other exit right now because we don't have the loop in the front. Um all things that are hopefully gonna change in April or May. Now, are there any questions? Caroline?
Um I actually received an inquiry from someone about the situation where you have the youngest students. Preschool and kindergarten who are in, you know, car seat restraints. And I guess, I don't fully understand this process, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess. Parents are not supposed to get out of their car to help their children get out of the restraints. But that creates a dilemma. Because obviously, these children are too young to get themselves sometimes out of their car seats. So how, is there anything in place to help with that situation when it occurs?
Well, we can't require staff to do it and we can, we certainly at dismissal cannot require them to buckle it in. But buckle the child in, that's a tremendous liability, we could never ask a staff member to do that. But um we do, I had, we do have parents that assist so that I'm, that's why I'm confused about that, that may be.
I am too, I I, as I said, I got this, I I don't, I I couldn't really picture the situation myself, but essentially it was apparently. Um a concern of a parent, uh I got this sort of second hand that um. She wasn't allowed to get out of the car to help her child out of the restraints, but I mean, that does, if if that is the case. And the child is not able to undo the restraints him or herself. Then that would be a problem, but I'm assuming the parent can quickly stop and do that, but I I don't really know. And it makes sense that the staff would feel there was a liability issue if they were to do that themselves, so I just wondered. If you've encountered this as an issue at all.
Chrissy?
Yeah, if I can just chime in, I actually um observed parents assisting their children buckling up, especially for preschool yesterday. So um when I was walking over to Oliver Ames or walking back from Oliver Ames, I can't remember which one. Um it was, I did observe that, so I would suggest if there is a parent who was not allowed to, so to speak. Please reach out to the building principal because that might be an isolated incident. Um I also know that I was there um one of the days, a parent said she had to buckle her child in. Would they mind if we, if the parent just pulled up a little bit, so not to be in the way of traffic? And absolutely that was allowed. So again, if somebody isn't allowed to, just if you could reach out to the building principal.
Or maybe they thought they weren't allowed to, yeah, I ju- I just don't wanna start a a rumor. So this is why I like them to reach out to the principal directly, cuz the they may know of a situation that we don't know of, but we've seen it plenty of times. So it's absolutely not true that they can't help them.
I think you're right, I think this was perhaps a parent who assumed she could not and um. Because it didn't make any sense to me that the parent couldn't quickly, you know, buckle a child in or or out. So that makes, I just wanted to be sure that that was the case. I mean, I I assumed it would be impossible to. Literally tell parents they couldn't get out of the car and yet you do have many young children that are not able and. Nor should they be able to get themselves out of those car seats, so thank you.
Any other questions? Jackie?
Hi, I don't have a question, I just wanted to tell everyone that we are working with ECAT. Um in the next couple of weeks to go around and film the the building. And so we'll have something that we can send out to people and put on our website, so. Um people can get a sense of of what it looks like now and and you know, the few things that we the. We have love to do with the unpacking, but they'll get a good sense of how everything looks.
Awesome. Chrissy?
I just wanted to take the opportunity um just to add on to what Alicia was saying about and and thank the community. For allowing the central office to be in this building. Um it has. Being able to just go out and see kids and see staff and have conversations, it has been. So incredibly rewarding and has provided a um a re, a a different sense of energy. That is really exciting, I'm back to color coding things and. Getting back to my elementary roots, no, but um but I just wanna thank the community because it really has been phenomenal and I've also heard staff say how nice it is. That they can just walk down the hall instead of having to worry about getting in their car and coming over to fifty Oliver Street, so. Um so thank you to the community for for giving us this wonderful opportunity to be attached to a school. And in such close proximity, I walked to RO, I walked to OA, um haven't haven't walked over to EMS yet. Um but but it is, it's it's remarkable.
Awesome. Anything else, Dr. Cabral?
No.
No? Okay. Um January first enrollment, Sasha Cabral. So this is just an update, we try to give you an idea, uh the state. Requires for for many funding purposes uh that I won't get into, they require what's called an October first report. And so because we do an October first accounting, we provide you with that information, which we did prior. Uh but we like to get a January first accounting because that's mid-year and that usually um takes into account. Anyone who maybe isn't moving or changing or um. Being outplaced or coming back from an outplacement or just so many other factors. At this point in the year, most people are settled. Um even people who may be starting the school year with us, they could be starting very close to the end of September or right after October first. Um it's also, it captures anyone that, for example, starts a school year at. A vocational school or a private school and they determine that they want to. Um they determine that they want to come back or that they want to go to their public school, so. We just find that it is a bit more accurate and you will see that uh i- it shows an increase. Of about twenty students um from October to January, so it is salient. Uh it also does include pre-K and the other thing that's important is that um to remember that we. Uh for or the pre-K program, then not just in Easton, but the pre-K program. Students are eligible as soon as they turn three, so they are referred potentially at two and a half. We do assessments, we have community peers, they enroll at three, unlike kindergarten. That means if they turn three on October first or December tenth or May fifth. They can, they are eligible for pre-K here and so the pre-K numbers, we always, those always go up every year. So we just wanted to give you a snapshot of those two, two time periods. Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four sco- ooh, school calendar first reading, Dr. Cabral. Okay, so Mrs. Pruitt and her um wonderful team has worked on this and they're gonna present as usual, three options for your consideration. And then we can um move to a second reading at a subsequent meeting base. A second reading at a subsequent meeting based on any feedback or questions that you have and then we can approve that so that. Um we do this every January so that people can start making their plans and um plan accordingly for the upcoming school year. Mrs. Pruitt.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cabral. So we, before you, you have three different versions of um next year's calendar. Um there are quite a few things that we took into consideration, we kept detailed notes over the past couple of years. To ensure that we were making, we were including everything and being very mindful of everything, so in the past, for example. Um the beginning of the year, the Jewish holidays were around that time, so we wanted to make sure that it didn't conflict, so forth and so on, so. You'll see that um in all three versions, um the start dates do not conflict with any holidays. Um and so, so just to, just to kind of keep that in mind. The other thing to note is the the difference in between start days for kindergarten preschool and the end dates. Um so we typically end uh preschool and kindergarten four days before. The last day of school in grades one through four, one through twelve, sorry, because. Of the the screening that we do for the next year, so that was taken into account. We also have two, our kindergarten start date is two days after our um our our. Grade one through twelve start date and preschool is two days after that. So those are some things we took into into account. Um also, this year is not, I I reached out to the. To um Danielle at the town who were, who's in charge of all the elections. Um this year, the November election day is not. Um it, there won't be a significant election at that time as far, well, they're all significant, let me rephrase that. Um there won't be a a high-profile election as far as national or or gubernatorial. So um with that being said, she did not see much of an issue of um having school that day. So in s- speaking with the principals and the cabinet, we decided that. We would, instead of having professional development on November seventh, which is election day this year, we would back it up in October. Um as uh which I will talk about in my assistant superintendent report. We um chose a new literacy program and so we really felt that having. A full-day professional development day closer to the beginning of the year was going to be um really important, especially in grades. K through six with the implementation of the new literacy program. Um and then we didn't want to have the next one the month later, so we felt having it in January, which is what we've had the past few years. Um is consistent and and would be beneficial to our, to our um to our staff. Um the other thing I wanted to just point out to you was the May seventeenth early release day that is um. Checked out with the prom, so um so that would be when teachers do. Work on class placements at the elementary level, um and then I know that usually that date coincides with when prom is in case. Students wanting, you know, get dismissed early, I don't think it's going, it it won't be an issue this year, this for this calendar. Um so looking at the three drafts, we have the teachers come back on draft one on the twenty-ninth. And the and the students in grades one through twelve come back on the thirtieth, that's your fir-, that's the first option. Which would mean kindergarten students come back on the first, which is right before the long holiday. And the um preschool students start on the sixth. And then if you look at version two, um we're just shifting everything today. Um where the um the teachers return on the thirtieth or all staff return on the thirtieth. The thirty-first is the first day for grades one through twelve. And then that pushes the first day of kindergarten right after Labor Day and the first day of preschool two days after that. Um if you, actually, if you go back to version one, you'll see that um. This also ends, if if there are no snow days, the last day of school would be on the eleventh in version one. And the last day for with five snow days would be the eighteenth, but on version two, it does push it over the Juneteenth. Holiday, so the last day would, um if we had five snow days, would be the twentieth. And then the last option, we always like to share with you an option where um students return after Labor Day. So this is, this is another option where teachers come back on the first, right before Labor Day. The um students return on the fifth and kindergarten starts on the seventh. Which would then push preschool back to the following week on the eleventh. And then the last day would be the fourteenth, but with five snow days, it would push the last day in June to the twenty-fourth. Which is, you know, the last week in June. So I think that's all the points I would like to make, we're looking, you know, you can see. Um parent conferences are in there as well, you know, K uh K through twelve on various dates. Um if you have any other questions, feel free to ask away.
You have traditionally asked us for uh the input of the cabinet, I will relay that the cabinet. Uh still prefers um calendar one or two or the dates that are in calendar one oh two, one. Or two, in terms of the start date of the school year, um when it affects MCAS, senior dismissals and so on, so. Uh in addition to that, um I've been getting a lot of um staff feedback about. Starting uh or continuing to start before Labor Day. Um I don't have a data point, I didn't do a survey, it was actually unsolicited. Um and so um I wanted to share that as well, that we're getting um. A lot of input that um the preference, while we didn't share the calendars. The preference that um we are receiving is reflected in either calendar one or calendar two. One of the things I like about calendar two is the littles, so the pre-K and K start after Labor Day. But the grades one through twelve would still start before Labor Day. I think that's less choppy for them. Caroline?
That is true and I do see that as an advantage for calendar two, but the Juneteenth. Holiday does complicate things because it adds actually effectively two extra days then at the end of the year. Um and it also creates some confusion just about the whole holiday issue. Uh people working on the holiday or not working on the holiday or uh so I I think that it makes it a little more complicated, just logistically. I mean, I do agree with you that it was kind of tidy to have kindergarten and and pre-K starting one day apart a piece, but I I think that. Uh I personally, I prefer version one, I don't feel strongly about that, but just because of the logistics of the additional holiday that's been added.
I'm sorry, Jen?
Um could we do uh uh could could we do a draft one point five? So where I I love everything about draft one except for kindergarten starting on Friday. So could we do draft one but move kindergarten and preschool to the schedule that they are in draft two? So kindergarten starts on Tuesday, preschool starts on Thursday the seventh and then they finish their year on the sixth.
So uh the only reason, because we did talk about that, it's very, it's interesting, we we sat down and talked about it, it's. It's really important that the kindergarten and preschool teachers have a solid three days. Without students to do those um or three, three and a half days actually, to do the screenings. Because they invite, you know, their their all their students in and they need, they utilize all of those days. Um to do the screenings for the next year. So that's the only challenge that if we moved it to the sixth. That would cut down the time that the teachers would have to screen students, which is a challenge.
At the end of the school.
At the end of the school year, correct, thank you.
So if they finished on the sixth. Then they would have, let's see, so they would have the seventh. Uh so it's that, it's that extra half day, I see.
Well, the last day is a half day, so they.
Yeah.
And a half days instead of three and a half.
Three and a half days, yeah.
That actually um came up this year because there was um just a tweak that needed to be made in the calendar, it was correct, but it was noted incorrectly. And it created a ton of anxiety for staff, so we know for sure that they are absolutely not. Interested in cutting the amount of time that they have for um for those.
Right.
Just those um screenings. It's a great point, as Chris said, it's something we definitely talked about. Jackie? There is something, I will say, there are different schools of thought, no pun intended, about um about students. Starting and then having a little break before they come back or starting and going straight through. Um particularly with the littles, um. You know, they they're not starting on a Monday per se, but um you know, to start. Um even kindergarten really, to start their first week is a four-day week. There there are arguments to be made for either side, it's not universal, just to totally based on the child. But just to throw that out there, that um the way we kind of look at things as adults, having that nice weekend and then coming back. Sometimes that works um better for children to have like a little um introduction. Time to sort of process and go home and come back again, so. Um it really is, there's not enough research either way to say that one works better than another, it's probably half and half. So uh I don't know if that allays a concern or makes it worse, but that is definitely something that we see.
And I and I also would just add that we're also um taking into consideration. We're we're predicting what the weather will be like in the winter, you know, that's something that we're not exactly sure. Um you know, some days we have ten snow days, some days we have two, so I mean, some weeks, some years, so, school years, so uh. I prefer the ten snow days, everyone knows I love.
Everybody knows that.
But um but I, you know, it is, that is the unpredictable piece of it.
Well, that that's what I was gonna say, the Juneteenth really only comes into play on calendar two if you have. What is it, three or four snow days, but um I don't have a strong feeling either way, I like either one or two.
what is it, three or four snow days, but, um, I don't have a strong feeling either way, I like either one or two.
Or, oh, sorry.
All right, Caroline, then Nancy.
I'm just wondering, now, is there a reason, either legal or technical or educationally, that we can't have it be kindergarten through grade twelve for the first group that comes in? And then the preschool would be that following week?
Uh, that's actually, at this point, that's contractual because the paraprofessionals are on a different schedule, they have a different number of days per year.
Well, that, that would be then a legal reason, thank you. Thanks.
Nancy?
Yeah, um, just wanted to make sure, two full days and two half days of professional development, that covers what the state needs us to have for professional development?
No.
There, there's, there's actually no set requirement for professional.
There is, no.
But.
Well, what they require us to go over, absolutely not.
Right.
No.
So, so we don't have to worry, but the, the professional development is contractual as well. Um, but of course, we always feel like we need more professional development time. Um, but that is a contractual issue, that's, that two, the two full days is what's in the contract.
And then the two half days that we have in, uh.
Well, the half days aren't actually professional development, they're for parent-teacher conferences, so we actually.
No.
Yeah, there's professional development.
May seventeen.
Oh, the May seventeenth, yeah, I thought you meant the half days at the summer, yep.
No.
And March twenty-second for grade six through twelve, yep.
Right, but it's not for everybody, so it's not K through twelve on both of them, so everybody doesn't get two full and two half days.
Right.
And then if you're implementing the new reading series, the teachers will get professional development by being taken out of classrooms with using substitutes, correct?
Yes.
Yes, which of course we don't prefer, but it's necessary.
Okay, and, and also contractually, teachers, um, are a hundred eighty-three days?
Yes.
One eighty.
Okay.
Yes, but the first day is, um.
No, I know, I just, cause I was just making sure we had the right amount of days on.
Yes, 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 thank you.
Okay.
Double checking that.
And I have one more thing, and then I'll stop. Do they still do the science thing at R O? No, that's gone.
Yes.
Another thing that goes, okay, thank you.
Jen?
Um, when would the, so on schedule one, when would the kindergarten open houses be? This be like Thursday, or?
Yes.
All right.
I know, decisions, right, it's like.
Yeah.
So we just need to pick, we typically pick two to move forward to a second reading?
Yeah, you don't have to do it that way, but you're right, you do typically do that. You could move forward one, you could wanna review all three, it's completely up to you.
I'd say version three doesn't appear to be particularly popular, certainly my least favorite version.
I think we probably all agree on that. Okay. Um, so do we want to move one and two forward, or? I'm still a fan of two. But I, I can see, I mean.
Michelle, the only thing I would say about one is if the teachers begin on Tuesday, that brings your grades one through twelve in for three full days, which is a nice start. If you're talking about getting the ball rolling quickly. So, you've got three, three full days of teaching before the Labor Day weekend, that's the only thing I like, I like one for that reason. Plus the fact that if there's five snow days, you're out before, you're out before Juneteenth, so.
It's also nice to be, I think for the students to be there three days, then they have three days off, so it's sort of a nice balance. You know, with two days in, um, they sort of have to cogitate over for the next three days, but, um, but as I said, I don't feel strongly, but I, I do prefer version one. But I, I think it makes sense perhaps to move the first two versions forward, so that we can all kind of contemplate.
Let's do that, let's move the both forward. So, draft one and two for our next meeting, is that? Okay.
Sounds good. Yep, great. Thank you, and thanks to Chrissy, um, and Julie and Lynn for, it's really, it's very complicated.
It is, it is, and Lynn, Lynn and I have been taking extensive notes throughout the years, so. We're hoping, you know, cause we've had to come back multiple times and change things, so we are hoping that no changes will, will be needed at this point.
That would be lovely.
All right. Anything else on that one? All right, public comment? I don't see anything in the chat. Pancake has a comment.
I don't see anything. Oh, there's one. Okay. Anne Sullivan, sixty-five Summer Street, as one of the walkers who goes to Blanche James every day, there has not been a crossing guard there yet. Crossing in front of the buses, entering the cars, leaving is so dangerous. Can we exit at the gym instead until the sidewalk in front of administration is done?
So, uh, so, I actually saw the guard there yesterday, so I'm not sure if, uh, everybody's leaving at the same time. The walkers should all be leaving at the same time, but I saw him, um, myself, and I saw him walk everyone over, so I'm not sure, um, why that would happen. I would say to reach out to the principal and make sure that all the children are leaving at the same time, but he was definitely there. Um, and for, as noted previously, they can't leave from the gymnasium because we have several hundred children there, and we don't have anyone to walk the, um, to, to be with the children there. Um, he is, he actually goes to Sheridan, so he starts here and walks over to Sheridan with, um, the families.
Yeah, so she just clarified, she said, there is a guard at Sheridan, he was not at the school today. So we will, we will, um, as probably as you stated, so I actually saw him today at the corner at three fifteen. So, we will definitely talk to, um, and, and get that fixed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks, um, I just wanted to give two, two, I think, quick updates. One is that I've been having, uh, the weekly meetings that we've been planning with Officer Aker, they've been going very well. Very well. In fact, uh, his role as a liaison to kind of let us know what's happening in the community, so that we can anticipate any issues, uh, when a student comes in, they're acting differently, we know they've had a really difficult night, or vice versa, has been, uh, wonderful. Having someone whose lens is schools and children has been great. So, uh, that's the first item. The second item is just, um, the, keeping you abreast of the CPC, um, application, or the, the CPA application to the CPC for two projects that we're looking at right now. One is the Richardson Olmsted Playground, the other are the courts at all of our aims. So I did work with the team to prioritize those. What, number one being the tennis courts, because we don't have any, we have no other courts, anywhere on campus, indoors, anything. And so, it really, um, it really affects our ability to not only practice, but to hold MIAA contests, um, in the Hockamock League, so that's priority number one. Priority number two in the same area are the basketball courts, that, uh, the, the new design actually incorporates some pickleball courts. And, um, certainly the tennis, basketball, and pickleball, we anticipate would be used very extensively by the community. So we would look forward to having those done there, in a very serious state of disrepair right now, and almost close to needing to be closed due to safety. And once they're closed, we obviously don't have anywhere else, uh, for that kind of activity, the gym classes use it as well. Um, then stay, uh, the third and fourth priority are actually the, the two stages of the Richardson Olmsted Playground. We have the North Playground and the South Playground. We cut them in half because the project was, uh, came in far more than we had anticipated. Um, as I mentioned at, I think, our last meeting, we have, um, just a, a, a situational, uh, conundrum now, where companies have lost a great deal of money during COVID. We were very fortunate on the fortunate end of something like this, when we went out to bid for the Blanche Ames School. The blade, the bids are locked, and ours was locked right before COVID. And so, not so great maybe for some of our vendors perhaps, or as profitable as they had hoped, but certainly good for us. Those vendors are certainly, um, you can imagine, it's just simple economics, they're trying to recoup any losses, and bids are coming in very high right now. So, um, the N- North Playground came in at two point four million estimate, and the South Playground at two point one. So we did ask for one million from the CPA for the North Playground. Um, we were able to get a grant for two hundred thousand in earmark that Senator Timolty advocated for, uh, us on our behalf for fifty thousand, and the R O pack committed thirty-five thousand. So we're gonna be about, um, a million doll, we're gonna be, I'm sorry, for the, for the playground, for the North Playground, we're still gonna be about a million dollars, uh, away from our goal. So, um, that project, we are going forward in terms of bidding, that bidding actually goes out in the next couple of weeks. We're hopeful that we can get, um, because that's just an estimate, of course, we're hoping that if we get a contractor bid, it may give us, uh, um, a different target, and if it does, we can work on some concerted fundraising. But without that information, it's very hard to say we should keep going or just, um, put it on the back burner for now. So we're gonna keep moving forward with that until we get a bid. And then the other project, uh, uh, as I said, the courts initially came in as a two, uh, excuse me, a, a one point two million dollar project, and now it's a one point six million dollar project. We also were able to get a two hundred thousand dollar grant for that. Um, however, I was advised to, um, apply for the full one point six million for that project, and then, um, because at the time, when I had to send it in, we had just applied for the grant, and it hadn't been approved yet. But now that it's been approved, that can be, um, reduced to one point four million. So, we did have a meeting, or the CPC had a meeting, but they, they knew that when looking at their agenda, they wouldn't be get, able to get to the schools. And so we were asked to reschedule, and we're in the process of rescheduling that right now. Hoping to get a little more insight into where we might be going, or if any of them will be moving forward when we get to that, uh, next meeting. I don't know if there are any questions about that?
Any questions?
Jackie?
Can you just let us know when that meeting is rescheduled?
Sure.
With the CPC, thanks.
Sure. Uh, I have no other notes this evening, yet. Thanks.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent notes, Chrissy.
So, I am so excited. Um, so for, so for the past year, we have put, we put together, um, our, our K through six needed, needed, needs a new literacy program. Um, if they, for the past, um, eight, ten, ten to, eight to ten years, we have been utilizing Reading Street, which, um, is actually no longer being published. Um, it is an outdated program, and so when we knew that it wasn't being published anymore, at that time, we knew that we had to start, um, the adoption process. And for the past year, actually, almost a year to the date, we started the process. Um, and I have been updating you throughout, but I'm just gonna review the process quickly. Um, we started with a literacy adoption committee, so that was made up of about, um, twenty, uh, volunteers in grades pre-K or grades K through six, um, including teachers, special educators, um, uh, administrators, reading specialists, reading coaches, um, and we, we were able to look and vet programs where we came up with the two programs to pilot. And those programs, as you know, were EL by Open Up Resources, as well as, um, Witten Wisdom by, um, uh, Great Minds. There is a component to Witten Wisdom, um, that, that Great Minds actually, a component, that Great Minds actually has called Geodes, which is a, which is a, um, a complement to the, um, foundational reading skills that we already have called Foundations. So Foundations was something that we had adopted a few years ago in, in grades K through three. Actually, last year was the full year of full implementation in grades K through three. And we knew that that is not something we wanted to part with as we decided on a literacy program. So, Geodes, which is, um, published by Great Minds, which was written by Wilson, who's the author of, of Foundations, as well as, um, Great Minds, which is the author of Witten Wisdom, came together and created Geodes, which, like I said, is a complement to Foundations. It is also a complement to Witten Wisdom, however, we really looked at that as a standalone, um, regardless of which program we chose. We knew that that was something we were interested in, in purchasing, um, regardless of the, whether it be EL or Witten Wisdom. So I just wanted to ha- kind of give you that background, um, to, so that you understand. I also wanna just remind everyone that throughout the process, we did a lot of professional development with the literacy adoption committee, as well as the literacy pilot committee, which also was about another twenty, um, staff members, volunteers, um, on the science of reading. So, the science of reading is, is, you know, we've been looking at our data, we looked at our data to see how we have really plateaued, um, and we know that we need to have a different focus, and the science of reading has been in, in, um, in play for many years. In fact, I know Dr. Cabral has done a lot of work with the science of reading prior to us really taking it, you know, naming it the science of reading, that were around the professional development here in Easton. Um, but it's something that, that we're really, it's, it's going to be a major shift for many teachers. So it moves away from guided reading and, uh, and, and moves towards skill-based groups and so forth and so on. So, with that being said, the pilot teachers took it on, they, they were excited. Um, in s- in fact, some of the classes knew that, the students knew that they, you know, were, were in this mix of piloting two programs, and it will be up to them to decide which program that will be used. And, um, last night we met, and we presented to both the adoption and the pilot committees. Um, we, we took pros and cons from both programs. We present, Anne Weintraub did a phenomenal job as the, now as the director of curriculum, um, presenting to both committees, um, the pros and cons for each program. We labeled it Program A and Program B, so they were not being judged by the name. And it was voted that, um, uh, that Witten Wisdom is going to be our new literacy program, K through six. A couple of things I just want, and, and of course, Geodes, that will go along with it, which was something we were going, we were planning on purchasing anyway. Couple of things I just wanna note, um, for you to know, and so if you hear from teachers or staff members, we are so committed to coming up with a professional development plan, so that teachers have and feel prepared for the start of next year. So this will be for full implementation in, um, come next school year. We are going to be, like you had, had mentioned Nancy, um, pulling teachers out of classes, un- unfortunately, but if, in the long run, it'll be good, so that they can be prepared with the program, what is the program like? What, you know, remind them about the science of reading, really meeting with their grade level teams to prepare, and, and, and then also, after the start of the school year, having opportunities to meet with their peers, as well as, um, continued professional development, um, on the program. Um, and then the other thing is that we looked at kindergarten, and we have to look at kindergarten differently. Uh, kindergarten, we are extremely committed to the importance of play and learning through play in kindergarten. And we recognized that there wasn't enough of that in either program. So, regardless of which program we choo- we chose, we knew that that is something that we would immediately have to look at and, and kind of revamp, for back, lack of a better term. So Anne Weintraub, the kindergarten pilot teachers, myself, uh, Sam Cedarbaum will be looking at that, the principal, and Aaron Finn, assistant principal, to ensure that that runs smoothly for the kindergarten teachers. Um, and you know, I was speaking with kindergarten teachers today, and I said, and, the plant, we might have a plan, and then it changes, right? I mean, we're used to that, so, um, so they're excited, and, and they're excited of, of our understanding of developmentally appropriate practice, and, and how important that is in implementation. And then lastly, the sixth grade, so sixth grade, they are, the confinements that they have are with, um, the scheduling. And so, it, the, the way Witten Wisdom is written, it's a ninety-minute block. Obviously, we know our sixth grade middle school schedule does not have ninety minutes for that type of instruction. However, I've already heard from colleagues around the Commonwealth that, um, have implemented Witten Wisdom in middle school. So we'll be drawing from, from their, um, their, their knowledge as well, and try to revamp that, so that it, it works with our sixth grade teachers and students as well. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say, I think that's it, I'm sure I'm forgetting something. But I really wanna commend the team, both, you, you all would have been. But I really want to commend the team, both, you all would have been so impressed. I was, you know, I'm impressed by our staff every day, but just the the commitment and the thoughtfulness. That they um, the seriousness and dedication that they took to making this decision. You know, sometimes they had to put their own feelings aside, because when the data was there and presented itself, they they really looked at what was best. For all students, K through six, not just what was best for their classroom. And so I would really want to commend them. Um, we're at a very exciting place for literacy instruction in Easton. And I think we're going to see tremendous results, it's also going to have us really look at special education. Um, because our students will be in, they will have um, grade level texts in front of them. And how we are supporting our special ed students, um, where they will be. Um, you know, working alongside their peers and and, you know, having those experiences, so. We're really excited, it's it's going to be a phenomenal time and um, it's gonna be a challenge, there's no doubt about it, but we are in this together. And we will get through it and push ahead as as our staff always does. So um, so that's, that's my update on the literacy program, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions? Jen?
Chrissy, that all sounds super exciting, so thank you for all the work you've done and for keeping us updated along the way. It's been clear that it's been a very robust and thoughtful process. Um, on your last point about the shift in special education, thinking. That might be something just to consider presenting to the CPAC. Because I think that might be of interest to parents to really understand those changes, so I'm sure they would welcome.
Yes.
You know, somebody doing a presentation to them at one of their meetings.
Definitely, thank you.
Great idea, John, thank you.
Yeah, and I also just want to let you know, I knew, once I stopped talking, I knew it would come to me. Um, the pilot teachers, part of the benefit of them piloting the program. Is we are now committed to having them continue utilizing the program for the rest of the year. So this will include uh, we will need to make a purchase for the materials for the remainder of the year. Which will need a school committee vote. Um, we obviously don't have it on the agenda tonight, so I was wondering if next week. We might be able to pull together a quick workshop, um, so we could vote on the approval of spending. It's going to be, it's going to cost a little less than about seventy-five thousand dollars to purchase the materials. For the piloting teachers for the remainder of the year. Um, I think that what's really instrumental about this is not only were they piloting the program. But they also knew the understanding and importance that they were going to become teacher leaders at their grade levels. So we had two to three teachers per grade actually um, implement, you know, pilot the program. So they will be resources for their, for their colleagues as well for next year. So I really would love to provide them with the opportunity to continue utilizing the program for the remainder of the year. Um, so that's just something for you all to consider, um, if we could do that.
I also just wanted to remind you that we did consider funding this last year before we did this budget. And we have put aside grant funds for this purchase, one-time funds um, for this purchase. And so the seventy thousand would come out of exactly what we.
Thank you.
Um, had estimated for the entire program. And so then when we go to buy the rest of the program, these teachers would not um, would not have resources purchased again. So this has already been put aside through grant funds.
Right.
Alright, are you done before I?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so before we move on to school committee notes, can we just take a quick look at calendars? And so we can give Chrissy a date, so Lynn would need a minimum of two days, so she posted tomorrow.
Tuesday would be the.
Be the earliest, so. I don't know what people's schedule for like next week, starting from Tuesday on. Caroline went to get her calendar.
And it would be the only agenda item, I would assume, unless something came up by tomorrow morning.
Michelle, I'm not available next week.
At all?
At all, sorry.
You going on vacation? Oh, good for you, yay.
Got my nails done.
You fancy.
This is what's great about, great about being retired, you can go on vacation when you want.
Vacation all the time when you retire.
My other half isn't though.
So.
We only need three people, right, I mean theoretically.
Yeah.
So i- is there three people available Tuesday?
I could do Tuesday.
Just depends on the time, what time are you thinking?
When, when could you be a third, you tell me?
I could be a third. Anytime after. Four.
Okay. How about you Caroline?
That's fine, after four is fine.
So do you want to do four, do you want to do four thirty? Obviously, Dr. Cabral should be in place of our meeting. It's four.
Or if it's quick, you can then then continue your meeting.
Thanks, Chrissy.
It doesn't matter, whatever works best for everyone, I mean, if if, I don't want to interrupt. Dr. Cabral's and Michelle's meeting, we could do it afterwards if that's better.
Sure, whatever. Or as Michelle said, just.
Do you care, four, four thirty, what do you?
It's, I'm open that block, so.
Alright, let's do four o'clock. And this will replace that meeting, if something comes up, Dr. Cabral can let me know. So four o'clock on the twenty-fourth and it'll be just the, the approval of purchasing?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, approval of the contract, yes.
Right.
Alright.
Do you have that contract, Chrissy, you'll have it in hand?
Yep, we will have it.
Yeah, we'll try to, as soon as we.
They sent, they sent preliminary one, but we are, we have to revise it, so.
Yep, as soon as it's all set, um, we'll try to get it to you before Tuesday, if you want to look it over even. So that you have any questions prepared, it could be even a shorter meeting for you.
Alright, thank you. That was easy, uh, school committee notes, uh, Caroline, do you have anything?
Well, nothing specific uh, that I, that I particularly had, but I just wanted to thank Jen for mentioning that. It was important for, I think, the PAC, uh, sorry, the CPAC to be aware of the new literacy program and all of the advantages. And I just wanted to say, Chrissy, you are one of the most enthusiastic, really uplifting people. So lucky to have you presenting these new, you know, initiatives with such incredible enthusiasm. It's like, you know, you get, I don't know, you get me excited.
Well, we're all, we are all so super excited and and we know it's gonna be hard work, but. You know, just knowing the potential that that is out there for our children is really what's motivating us and and it's just. It, we've had so much excitement just talking about it and seeing what the kids are producing in those piloting classes is just incredible.
Well, when you make these presentations, I always think, ooh, I wonder if they'd let me just go back to school.
If you want to go back to school, you gotta go back to early elementary.
Absolutely.
True, alright. Edit Caroline?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Nancy?
Um, just thank you to everybody that worked on getting Blanche Ames open and thank you for the update. Um, it's really good to hear and see all the good things going on. And also I uh, in, along with that do-good thing, um, thank you to everybody that voted. I know it was kind of a pain in the neck, but it was well worth it and so happy, and I'm so happy my niece wrote the letter for Mel. Cause uh, we, you know, it takes a village in our family, so um, thank you. And tomorrow is the last day of OA mid-year, so I hope everybody did well.
Awesome, alright, Jackie?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Okay, Jen?
Uh, just a couple of things, are you gonna talk about the show choir last weekend, or do you want me to do a shout out for that?
Um.
That was on your list.
I'm not prepared.
Okay, okay, alright, so the show choir competed, I think it was their first big competition of the year, the Mill City Show Choir Competition and took home a silver medal. So congratulations to them, they had a great performance, um, and some from the photos I saw, looks like a bunch of very happy, excited kids. Having an awesome time, so love to see that. And then um, the special ed PAC has a monthly or uh, they've periodic support group meetings, their next one is coming up on Wednesday. February fifth, uh, I'm sorry, Wednesday, February first. Um, and um, for, if anybody is interested in attending, they'll have more information on, you know, kind of where and when. Um, on the the CPAC Facebook page, so any parents who um, you know, who have children. Who receive special education services, or if you um, you know, are are curious about them, they do welcome um, folks to that page. And it's a great way to ask questions, to get connected with the right resources, it can help um, families kind of get, you know. Who do you ask in school, a lot of great questions and answers, a lot of supportive peers. Um, and they, they share a lot of programs that are available locally, um, you know, adaptive. Um, sports and and arts camps and um, uh, you know, workshops through the the Brockton Arc. On, you know, housing and health insurance and trusts and and all kinds of serious stuff and fun stuff, so it's a great resource, just wanted to get that out there. Um, anybody's watching.
Name of that Facebook page, because I think a lot of people don't spell CPAC.
Oh, sure, that's a great point, uh, so it's Eastern space MA space S E P A C. Which stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council, so if you just search for Eastern MA CPAC.
And it's an incredibly supportive, kind.
Wonderful.
Group, it's, and it's all they're there for is to just help you navigate, so it's really, it's really a great resource.
And they work really well with the staff and um, Teresa Skinner, Director of Student Services, is constantly attending meetings and working with them. It's a, it's a wonderful collaboration.
Great, that's all I had.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so before we move into executive session, just a quick reminder, we have a meeting next Tuesday. The twenty-fourth, and that's just for uh, the contract with the literacy program. And then our next regular meeting is February second, two thousand twenty-three at five o'clock. So, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session and not to return to open session. For the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining for Unit A. And SPEA, which is the Custodian, Secretarial, Clerical and Food Service Units. And in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental for the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second?
Wiseman second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Vance, yes?
Iluka, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alright, great. We'll see you there, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
There, right?